Ten. Five.
Good morning Chairman, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners, and welcome to the Wednesday, June 2nd, uh, June 16th, excuse me, 2021 Board of County Commission Meeting. I'm Akim Ashford, the Director of Strategic Communications. There are two health and hazardous waste events we'd like to let you know about this morning. The first is Saturday, June 19th at Spirit Aerosystems. This event is from 9:00 to 1:00 a.m. Please use the MacArthur Street entrance at the corner of K-15 and MacArthur Street. The event will be held in the P parking lot. Saturday, June 26th is the next event at 4380 South Broadway from 9:00 into 1:00. This is just west of the closed Kmart. Please enter from the 47th Street South and exit onto Broadway. The county is seeking your feedback for the ARPA American Rescue Plan Act, which is the ARPA funding. We need your help to determine the best ways to use the more than $100 million in funding. Your participation in this brief survey will help the Cedric County Board and County Commissioners develop an effective spending plan that focuses on these funds where they are most needed. You can actually find that survey on the Cedric County website if you do a quick Google search of Cedric County American Rescue Plan Act. Commissioners, taking a quick look at the rundown of today's agenda, under appointments, you will approve several appointments and resignations to various boards. Under new business, Hope Hernandez will have a presentation of the 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. There is an acceptance of donations of personal protective equipment from Sam's Club for COVID-19 response. There's a consideration of a grant for the DNA Capacity Enhancement for Backlog Reduction or CEBR program. Consideration of a grant application for two low-floor ramp accessible vehicles and an in-vehicle security camera system. A hearing for the proposed adoption of the 2019 Safety Code elevators and escalators. An update of COVID-19 fiscal response from Lindsey Polerussell. And a report of the boards and bids and contracts from the June 10th meeting. With that Chairman, I'll turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Akim. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Wednesday, June 16th Cedric County Board of Commissioners Meeting. It's nice to see a number of people in the audience. It looks like we continue to make a little bit of back-to-normalness going on, so welcome everybody, Commissioners welcome. So with that, I'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Indication to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Yes, Commissioners, you received our emails. I think we had two electronic public agenda items. Does anybody have any comments about or questions about those? If not, I'll move to receive and file those.
Okay.
There's a motion to second to receive and file the electronic public agenda items. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
And also on the public agenda, we have three people signed up to address us, so we will go in order of that I was presented. The first up is David Sodin. Please approach and state your name and address, and you have five minutes, and the clerk will keep track of the five minutes to address the commission. Good morning.
Thank you. My name is David Sodin. I live in Derby, Kansas. I have a couple of comments, and I have copies of all these comments that the three of us will be making this morning for you. I'm not going to read verbatim what we're giving you, but I do want to highlight and summarize a few of the points. So I'm the Chairman of the Fifth District Citizens Advisory Board, and as a result, we looked through ICT-1 starting in March of 2021. As we looked at the program, we talked with Dr. Gallagher, Malachi Winters, the ICT-1 team, Calm Care, Wichita Police Chief Gordon Ramsey, Derby Police Chief Lee, other law enforcement personnel, public safety experts, and even had a retired fire chief on our board as we reviewed all of this. We did our research without Commissioner Howell or anyone else outside of our cab having any influence on our questions or on our findings or our opinion. Among our findings, we had many things, but here's a few that we're going to address today and ask you guys to take a look at. Many of the agencies in the county are not fully aware of the program or sure how or when they can use ICT-1. Outside agencies are not informed when the personnel can call. They're also not informed that their personnel can leave the scene when ICT-1 arrives, which means the saving of a resource in the field isn't fully happening. There's not a current data metric system to track the performance or the progress or opportunities of ICT-1. If ICT-1 doesn't maintain consistent operation schedules and hours due to staffing shortages, outside agencies won't rely or trust on ICT-1 for help in a mental crisis. As medication is not dispensed by the unit, the resource of a paramedic has a greater need to put an ambulance back in service, especially with our current shortages of paramedics. Our board did pass an opinion that I will read verbatim from this. The Citizens Advisory Board, Fifth District, has independently reviewed the policies and procedures of ICT-1, along with independent interviews of Derby Police Chief Robert Lee, presentations by Police Chief Gordon Ramsey and Captain Jeff Weeble, Lieutenant Fox with the Bel Air Police Department, retired law enforcement officials, current public safety experts, a retired fire chief, along with Malachi Winters and the ICT-1 team, in coordination with Calm Care. We find that ICT-1 program has tremendous value, and we desire to support initiatives that address the serious issues of mental health. In an effort to be a part of the solution to the issue and an improvement of county services, we ask the Cedric County Board of County Commissioners to do the following. One, create a manager position in ICT-1. This person will be responsible for tracking all data and a clearly defined position, including making that information publicly available on county websites. Two, create a data tracking component for use in training and identifying calls that come into emergency services that can be taken by ICT-1. Three, the ICT-1 manager should be required to submit a report to the county manager and the B O C C monthly on the progress and performance of ICT-1. Create a continual training program for public safety agencies in Cedric County to ensure that everyone is aware of how and when ICT-1 is available and at the disposal of responding emergency personnel. Consider removing the paramedic from the team, allowing more ambulances to be in service on a daily basis, and not restrict the use of ICT-1 due to paramedic shortage. And maintain consistent hours and schedule of availability. We want to thank everybody who participated in helping us find our research and in speaking with us, and we want to thank you, the board, for considering this and taking action to improve our mental response, our mental health response in Cedric County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't see any questions. Next speaker is Olivia Hayes. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, everyone. You probably recognize my name from later in the agenda. I'm going to be sworn in to join the Citizens Advisory Board later today, and I have been attended, well, I guess I attended one meeting, their last meeting, where they were presenting their findings about ICT-1. I was there as a non-voting member. And in addition to their suggestions for how we can improve the current program, I really want to ask that at least as much time and energy is also being put towards having more available beds, mental health beds, across Cedric County. I shared with them a personal story. A friend of mine, last year in the midst of COVID, experienced a true mental health crisis in her family. She didn't know about ICT-1 at the time. She was able to get her husband to the hospital safely. The biggest pain point throughout that whole process that we walked through was getting him a bed where he could get true treatment. That's what was going to bring him home to his family. So on her behalf, I mean, I showed her ICT-1, and she herself said, "It sounds like a great program, but mental health is not a one-and-done situation." And this kind of echoes what Derby Police Chief Robert Lee said. He said, in his report to us, "If the county has to choose between a mental health facility or ICT-1, the answer would overwhelmingly be a county mental health campus." I also spoke with a family member of mine who works in operations at a mental health facility, and she told me that it's a known fact that mental health beds are underfunded across the state, and that really struck a nerve with me. I would really love to see Cedric County be the exception to that rule. You're mentioning ARPA and all these other things. I think now is the time that we can focus on this. So just in closing, like he said, I applaud the work so far. I think it's a great program. I just want to make sure that we're focusing on the other side of the problem, which is getting people true healing, and I think the best way to do that, the way that's going to make the most long-term positive impact to our mental health, is going to be more beds and facilities. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Olivia. I don't see any questions.
I just have one comment.
Oh, Commissioner Cruz.
Olivia, thank you for being here today. Yesterday at our staff meeting, we had, the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition gave almost a two-hour report of how we are trying to move the needle with mental health and substance abuse. I would suggest, if you haven't watched that meeting, you go back and watch it. It's very informative, and I think you'll be pleased with what you hear.
Awesome. I'll definitely check that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is John Nicholas. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning, the Commissioners and everyone else here. I'm John Nicholas, and I'm also a member of the Community Advisory Board for District Five. And I remember hearing about the announcement of the ICT-1 program back in 2019, and I was thrilled. I think it's a wonderful program and has a lot of potential. I first ran into mental health when I was 10 years old, and I accompanied my father to be sworn in as a member of the Clark County Nevada Mental Health Association. It was the choice of our board to look at this as we reviewed some of the budget proposals that came along, and we were interested in learning more as a new board about how government worked in Cedric County. We accepted an invitation and toured the facility and listened to the presentations on March 30th. Became very evident on April 2, our next meeting, that there were a lot of questions going on and that this, in my opinion, was a pilot program that's still a pilot program. It got interrupted, as so many things did by 2020. Our board is a very diverse board. We have, as David mentioned, a retired fire chief. We also have an RN. We have a family engagement specialist with USD 219, 260, I'm sorry, and we have myself as a retired nursing home administrator. The questions we found fit the pattern that are appearing more and more around us all over the, our lives. Voluntary organizations, governmental business have been scrambling and trying to figure out how to get through 2020, and in some cases, they got, many cases, they got distracted from their primary goal. You had to deal with what you had to deal with, and people didn't go back and look at this program in the summer of 2020, 12 months after 19. So it went on. To move into a post-pilot program, our recommendations define management. It does not mean one person sitting in an office 40 hours a week assigned to manage that group, but it needs to be defined. It obviously wasn't when you asked, and people look around and say, "Him." You know, they're looking for some sort of approval from others. Accountability for data collection. The data collection we had didn't tell us what they were doing. There's a lot of stuff out there. Regular data reporting and management oversight, not only from the person that gets put in charge, but on up, all the way up to the board. The alternative, if you don't do that, is to disband the program. There's no sense in wasting money on a mismanaged program. And I have two comments in closing. Number one, the recommendation for a qualified mental health professional to review the program, we're not thinking of spending $20,000, $50,000 on outside consulting. We think there's enough resources between the various county professionals that run the departments to find somebody, perhaps somebody in another county in Kansas, somebody that they went to school with, that could spend two to four hours to look over our recommendations and say, "Hey, they wanted 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5 data points, but here's 6 and 7 that are important." Okay? That's the purpose of that. The second one is, and it just got mentioned a minute ago, the funds for COVID, COVID blew a lot of holes in mental health. Liz, Angie talked great length about using beds. Beds are important. We do need to have them. You have two facilities right here now in Wichita that would be real easy to get. You've got the one out here on West Central, the Old Riverside Hospital, and you've got 8100 East Pawnee that are both for sale, and they're both set up to do that. With that, we stand open for any questions, and thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chair, Mr. Chairman. I wanted just to give, I guess, some thoughts on what we've heard this morning. First of all, let me just say, I'm, I'm actually very impressed with the Citizens Advisory Board and the work that they've done. I have talked in the past about having some ad hoc meetings, talking with people and that type of thing, and that's been valuable as well, but I plan on continuing to do that, but to the extent that Citizens Advisory Board is a little bit more formal, they were able to take, if you will, an action item and to, and to dig into that over, over a series of months, and I think that this was very thoughtfully done. When I, when we first met, I think it was in March, I believe was our first meeting, they asked me, they said, "What are the things that Cedric County is doing right now that are kind of interesting that we ought to, we have to understand more deeply, or what kind of things would you like us to look at?" I didn't really give them this specifically as a, as a thing, but we, I listed, you know, 50 things that you could take a look at, and they picked this off that list. And, and as the Chairman of the Board mentioned a moment ago, I did my very best not to drive this in any way, try not to create bias, and so they on their own kind of did this entire project, and they created a subcommittee to investigate this, and over, I think, four, again, it started that very first meeting in March, but they, over the next three meetings, they, they spent quite a lot of time on this, and so I think it's valuable to have citizens, if you will, look at this program and say, "Here's what we, here's what we see from our perspective." And they did not just, not just talk to each other, but they talked to police chiefs, and they talked with other professionals in the community. So I think, I'd like to highlight the, the six items on the first page that the Chairman presented to us today. I'd like to not lose track of this because I think these are valuable. One of the things I talked about was, when we started this program, so a couple of years ago, we've not really made any substantive changes to it. I think that these are, these are wise, wise comments, so I don't want to lose track of this. I think we ought to, to keep this in our, in our, in our, in our, in our mind. Let me point out, they did say they think it's a valuable program. Chief Lee in Derby, when I've met with him in the, in years past, he's, he's begged us to do a mobile mental health program, and I think that the fact that we have one out there now is, is awesome. I don't know that Derby is getting the full effect of that because they just don't, they've not been able to know about it or know how to use it. And when they have gone to Derby, unfortunately, they have not been able to free up their law enforcement officers. So I think this is some good points that you made, and I think we could do a better job of, of telling our community partners how to use this program and how to access it and value. And then one of the things they mentioned, I think was really good, is the, the person on, on this team that does a physical assessment, they're doing, they do, they do a physical assessment, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a paramedic. It could be someone who knows how to do a physical assessment, and to the extent we need paramedics in the, in our EMS group, it might be wise for us to find someone who can do a physical assessment as this team member, but not necessarily use a Cedric County EMS paramedic. So I think that was also very good, and I wanted to say thank you for your work. They also looked, by the way, they did, they also did look at the Food Master Plan as a secondary subcommittee, and I, we have not heard, we've not had them report on that, but I think we have some information in our email regarding that, rather than just talking to me. They wanted to talk to the, to the full board so everyone understands, has a chance to understand their perspective. And let me also say, in addition to David Sodin, Olivia Hayes, and John Nicholas that you've heard from this morning, we also have Liz Lueira in the audience today. Say thank you for her, for her presence today and for her good work. So I want to just say my appreciation to the cab board. I don't have any questions, I don't think necessarily, I just want to say thank you for all your work, work on this, and Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the, the comments this morning.
Okay. I'll second the motion, receive and file. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it, and I want to thank all the citizens that came to speak to us today. I look forward to reading through your report, seeing if, what's in there that we can make things better here in Cedric County, because that's always our goal. If you go back five years ago, I was running for this office, and one of my campaign promises at that time was to create a Citizens Advisory Board, because out of five Commissioners, not a single one of them had a Citizens Advisory Board, and I thought it was important to have citizen input to the individual Commissioners at that time. And so when I was elected, I kept that campaign promise, and I created the very first one with the current Commission. Previous Commission did have one, but with the current Commission, I was the first one to create one, and since that time, the rest of the Commissioners have recognized the value of a Citizens Advisory Board to advise them, the individual Commissioners, on different issues that come before the board. With that said, I don't know that we ever fully defined exactly what the scope and purpose of the Citizens Advisory Board is, and maybe we need to go back and review that because in my mind, that when I asked it be created, it was to be able to advise me, the Commissioner for District Three, on issues that affected the county in District Three. At that point, I had nothing in my mind whatsoever that the Citizens Advisory Board would come to the entire Commission and advocate for something before the entire Commission. So I think it's something that all the Commissioners need to discuss, is how we want to use the Citizens Advisory Board in the future. I know that it's a brand-new one for Commissioner Howell. In four and a half years, I have never asked one of my Citizens Advisory Board members to come and testify before the County Commission. I expect them to go to me, and then I carry it to the other four Commissioners. So I think it's something to discuss, but I appreciate your efforts. I appreciate you putting together the report, and I will review it. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I would just like to comment and say, I believe there's been some political conflict on ICT-1, so to the extent they have opinions that I think are important to the community and to others besides myself, I want you all to have a chance to hear them directly and ask them questions if you were interested in doing that, to understand how this process was done, because if I simply receive this personally and all I do is, is, is keep it to myself, then the entire, the public and the, and you as my fellow, as my colleagues don't necessarily have the, the, the background as to how, you know, as to what I know and how I got that information. So I think in full transparency, it's good that they did this work and presented publicly, which, by the way, was their desire as well. Thank you.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to receive and file. Most of the other comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you again, citizens. So Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of June 2nd, 2021.
Commissioners, you received a copy of the minutes of June 2nd. If you have any questions or comments, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 2nd. There's a motion and a second about the June 2nd meeting, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments. Item B, resolution appointing Ashley Brockelman to the Cedric County Second District Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Papun.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counselor. We have prepared a resolution appointing Ashley Brockelman to Commissioner Lopez's Citizens, Second District Citizens Advisory Board. She's replacing Leslie Nami, who is unable to continue to serve on that board. Resolution's in proper form, and asks you to approve the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, I've gotten to know Ashley over the last handful of months because she works at Exploration Place, and I'm a board member there, and so I really value her opinion, and I'm excited to see what she can bring to this board. I also want to apologize to her because I didn't realize now that our meetings were open that we were swearing people in at the meetings, so I will be getting hold of you later to set up another swearing-in, and I apologize for that, too, for you. But I want to thank Ashley for her service here, and we'll make a motion to accept this resolution.
Okay. Motion and second to accept the res, the appointment. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And to clarify, that is an appointment. Correct. Okay. Yes. Okay, yes. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, resolution appointing Olivia Hayes to the Cedric County Fifth District Citizens Advisory Board.
And Mr. Papun.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun again. As mentioned by a previous speaker, there was a vacancy on Commissioner Howell's Citizens Advisory Board for District Number Five. Patrick Lockwood resigned, had to resign from that board. The resolution for you today is appointing Olivia Hayes to the board. Resolution's proper form, and asks you to adopt the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Olivia Hayes, I want to say thank you for stepping up to serving this role. For anybody who's listening, I do have another opening that just, this just is now happening, so if anybody wants to serve on this board, please do contact me. I'd love to talk with you about that, but Olivia's already committed to this, she's already attended meetings, and she, and she's very, very active in the community, so I'll say thank you. She's a very good, in my opinion, very good nomination to this position, and Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, we would adopt the resolution appointing Olivia Hayes.
Okay. I'll second that. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And here to be sworn in. Boy, this is a first in a.
Good morning, Commissioners. So nice to see you in person.
I know, a year and a half.
Grateful to be able to come back and swear a new appointment in.
Absolutely. This is a momentous occasion.
I'll be happy to come to your meeting.
Good morning.
Morning.
I will give you the oath, and at the end, if I do or I swear or I affirm, if you raise your hand, I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of my office of Cedric County Fifth District Citizens Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do.
Very good. Thank you. If you'd like to say anything else.
I think I'm good at talking today.
Congratulations. Thank you for being a part of our community. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, resolution reappointing Alora Forshee to the Cedric County Grievance Board in the alternate department head position.
Mr. Papun.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of weeks ago, we had this item on the agenda, and it was tabled for some, it gives some additional information to Commissioners. I know Commissioner Howell had some questions, and Commissioner Cruz had questions as well. This makeup of the Grievance Board has been in place since about 1986, when we adopted personnel policies and procedures back then, creating a three-member board with two, with alternates for each of those three members. One member comes from our elected officials group, one member comes from employees, and the other comes from appointments, or recommendations for appointment by the county manager. And this is the alternate position, as recommended by Mr. Stoltz. In answer to Commissioner Cruz's questions the last time, you can see, I sent you all information, I can go over it again, but some of the members have been on the board quite a long time. I know Susan Earlewine is the department head representative, and she's been on for probably about 11 years or so, 12 years, but these boards really haven't met very frequently. This board hadn't met very frequently over the last five, 10 years, so that's probably why these people have been on the board for so long. The employee representatives haven't been on as long, and actually, County Clerk's been on this board for a long time as well. But anyway, the, the resolution for you today is for the alternate position of department head. Alora Forshee has only been on this board, I believe, since 2019, and reappointing, recommendation is to reappoint her to this board. Resolution's in proper form, and again, it's the county manager's recommendation, asks you to approve the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will, I will support the resolution today, but I do, I guess I do have some, some questions as to who are the, do all three of these positions have alternate appointments?
Yes, sir.
They do? Okay. And I still, I still don't know who the people are and what the process is for selecting these people. But, it sounds like, in this case, it's the management, manager makes the selection in this case. Is that correct?
He makes the recommendation. You actually make the selection.
Okay. Is that how it works with the elected official and the employees, well?
Yes.
Okay. I, I think we ought to, I do think that there is a, a previous resolution that was replaced. You mentioned the current resolution, but the old resolution was replaced. And it's interesting, just look, just thinking about what a grievance board is supposed to do. I kind of liked the previous board makeup a little bit better, but I, I think we as a commission ought to take a look at this, only because, at the end of the day, a grievance board needs to settle disputes between management and, and their workplace, I'm assuming. And so, when you have folks that are appointed by management, there's a, there's maybe a preponderance of loyalty or bias that might be built into that. We don't know that for sure. But, I just think it might be nice to have disinterested people that have no input whatsoever as to how they got on that. I mean, there shouldn't be any, any type of perceived loyalty or bias by anybody who's going through the grievance process. And so, I think we should take a look at that, and maybe that's a discussion for a future staff meeting. But, I'd be glad to support the, the adoption of the resolution today when it's, when we vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Alora Forshee is a consummate professional. She is receptive and responsive to every single email. She is incredibly smart and awesome. I love working with her. I think that this is a good appointment, and so, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution reappointing Alora Forshee to the Sedgwick County Grievance Board in the alternate position.
I'll second that. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I should have said also, again, to the, to the, the specific personalities that are serving on this board, I have the highest regard for them. I think that these are, these are tremendous people. I trust their work. I, I think they are extremely ethical, and I have no concerns about them personally in any way. I just think that the structure of how this board is made is really my concern, not the people currently serving on this board. I think Alora would do a tremendous job, so I'd be glad to support the resolution today. Thank you.
The motion and a second to approve as presented. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item E, presentation of the 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Okay. We're ready. Hope Hernandez is going to join us. Good morning, Hope. Welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Hope Hernandez, your accounting director. Before I present the 2020 Annual Financial Report, I'm going to let Michael Gerber, a partner at BKD, and Teresa Seymour, a senior manager at BKD, brief you on the 2020 audit results.
I have a little cheer for you. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Again, my name is Teresa Seymour. I'm a senior manager at BKD, and I'm going to give you the audit results and the BKD deliverables about the audit process. So, I know you guys have received both the annual report and the management letter. So, you don't have to have that on hand, but that's what I'll be talking about. So, the first thing I will point you to is going to be the, the finance section. In that section, there's a letter on BKD letterhead that's labeled Independent Auditor's Report. In that letter, it talks about management's responsibility, which is to prepare the financial statements, and then what auditor's responsibility is, which is to form an opinion on those financial statements after audit evidence is obtained. In that letter, it also goes on to talk about the opinion, which is, it says it's presented fairly, or an unmodified, or a clean audit opinion. So, this is the best opinion you can get. That's exactly what you want to see every time. So, very happy to present that. Next section I'll point you to is going to be the single audit section. In this section is where we present the federal audit, federal funds audit results. In this year, we did the coronavirus relief funds was the major program that was selected to be tested. And in this section, you'll see a report labeled, Report on Compliance on Major Program. So, in that report, it also says an opinion on the federal program, and it says, in our opinion, the county complied, which again is an unmodified or a clean audit opinion. So, again, really like to present on that. Also want to say that there were no single audit findings in this year as well. The last thing I'll talk about is going to be the management letter. So, the management letter is a required communication between the auditors and those charged with governance, which is, in this case, the county commissioners. Just to let you know if there, there was any significant matters or anything that we felt warranted bringing to the attention of the commissioners. You all have been provided this letter, and if you have any questions on that, I'm happy to answer anything. I also want to say thank you to the finance staff of the county. Putting together this report is quite the undertaking, and they're always very responsive with us as far as the audit goes, trying to get us things quickly. And in a remote environment, that, that was a little bit more difficult this year. So, we really appreciate their efforts in, in putting this together. So, unless there's any questions, I'll hand it back over to Hope to do her presentation over the financials.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to thank you all for the report. It was just a few years ago, the report didn't look like this.
It's very true.
And so, I do want to congratulate our finance department, because not only were they working a $450 million overall budget, but they also had tacked on, with everything we did, over another 100 million that they worked last year. And to have an unmodified report from the basic report and from the COVID financing is fantastic. And I just want to pass on my congratulations for the job well done for our entire finance staff. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Again, Hope Hernandez, your accounting director. I know that 2020 is a bit in the past, and a lot has changed since then, but the 2020 financials show that we are in a positive financial position going in to what we are now, 2021. Sedgwick County is required by state law, as well as by various bond covenants, to produce financial statements annually within 180 days of the end of the fiscal year. That financial report is published in the form of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Not only are we required to publish our financial statements, but we are also required to have those financial statements audited by an independent CPA firm, and that firm was BKD. As BKD mentioned earlier, the financial audit is complete, and they have issued the county an unmodified opinion, stated otherwise as a clean opinion, which is the highest grade that we can achieve. The Division of Finance has published the 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and that document has been delivered to you. It provides a very complete and accurate disclosure of the results of the county's financial activity for 2020, which ended on December the 31st. The financial report, and most importantly, the day-to-day financial accounting activity that was required in order to generate this report, was produced by my accounting staff. And again, I wanted to give them a great shout-out. We went from having, you know, some findings last year to not have any, any findings this year at all, working with the CARES funding and everything else. So, they put in a lot of hard work this year. The members of my team are Brandy Bailey, Rebecca Wadsworth, Amy Walters, Mandy Estes, and Lynn Newby. The county accounts for its financial activities in two different ways. We are required to primarily answer questions about our near-term financing capabilities. So, what does that mean? Well, in the private sector, the primary interest of the entity is to know whether or not they made a profit, and what their overall financial position is. That is a long-term view of the finances. In the public sector, we are not here to make a profit. We are here to deliver services that can't be delivered by private entities to our community. And in order to provide those services, we have to have the ability to fund those services. There are three perspectives of analysis. The first one is the near-term financing, and this produces our traditional fund statements. And what that means, that is instead of consolidating all of our accounts and records into one big statement, we maintain separate sets of books for dedicated funding streams that we have for specific activities that we need to keep segregated. Those fund statements produce information that I'm going to share with you today. The second is financial position. This is the traditional way that businesses report their financial information. For the traditional statements, we produce what are called entity-wide statements that publish, establish our financial position. Just like a private corporation rolls up all of the activities of its various divisions into a single set of financial statements, that's what we're doing in the financial position, is rolling all of our funds to produce a single set of financial statements for Sedgwick County. The third is long-term trends, which are shown in the statistical section of the audit report. There are two bases of accounting that measured, that are measured in the audit report. The first one is the traditional statements use the modified accrual approach, which is a combination of the cash, cash basis and full accrual accounting methods in terms of revenue recognition. And the second is the entity-wide statements, they use the full accrual approach. So, now we're going to jump into the traditional fund statements. So, before we jump into that data, I just want to tell you that, I want to point out the page numbers for which the data and the charts are referring to is at the top of each slide, if you want to reference back to that later. So, I will begin with the traditional fund statements. I'm going to begin with the fund balance. This chart shows five years of history, so that you can get a sense of where changes have occurred in the last five years, and what kind of changes have transpired. The chart is divided into different colors, each representing a different fund or fund type for all of the county's governmental activities. The green at the bottom is the county's general fund, which is the largest single area of our financial system, and it's where most governmental activities take place. The general fund ended 2020 with a fund balance of 93.9 million. The blue segment immediately above the green represents our Fed and state assistance funds, which are also considered our grant funds. The five-year trend represented here shows a relatively consistent fund balance over time. The gray segment represents all other funds, which is a combination of the fund balances of the Fire District, the Special Revenue Funds, and the Capital Project Funds. And that fund balance is 60.6 million dollars. There's a thin blue line, and that represents the debt service fund, and its balance was 1 million. The orange segment immediately above that represents the debt proceeds fund. These are the funds that account for bond proceeds from the sale of debt that haven't yet been used to either pay for the project or refund the debt for which the bonds were sold. The fund balance for that is 7.2 million dollars. Finally, at the top of the chart, you'll see the Public Building Commission, the PBC Fund, which has an ending fund balance of 1.5 million, and that is primarily money that was collected by the Public Building Commission to pay for a building on Wichita State University's Innovation Campus. And the bonds that the PBC sold to pay for that building will be repaid solely with the proceeds of the Wichita State University Mill Leavy that we impose. Now, we're going to look at the general fund, which is our biggest fund. This chart identifies five years of general fund, fund balances, and it identifies a classification of fund balances within each year. The red color at the bottom represents the non-spendable fund balance, which are net assets that are related to inventories, receivables, and other things that can't be readily spent. The gray bar represents a sun, a signed fund balance. Every year when we adopt a budget, we budget for a large amount of contingencies in case we get hit by a major storm or have a major event, like we have, and it's there to provide legal spending authority. So, we don't always expect that storm to hit or a crisis to occur. So, we don't want to have to raise property taxes every year to fund the contingencies. So, that's how we fund them, is with that gray balance. When we do that, we are assigning the fund balance, and we're designating a use for it in the subsequent year. And you can see that that fund balance is 13.2 million. The light green segment at the top of the chart is, is the unassigned fund balance. That's the amount of the general fund balance for which there is no designated use. The sum of the unassigned fund balance and the assigned fund balance, which is 68.2 million and 13.2 million, at the end of 2020, is what accountants refer to as unrestricted fund balance. The county has a fund balance policy that states that the unrestricted general fund, fund balance should never be less than 20% of the budgeted expenditures and transfers in the general fund. What you see on this slide is a demonstration of our compliance with the policy limitation. We ended the year with 81 million dollars of unrestricted fund balance. Budgeted expenditures are 227 million. The 20% threshold is 45 million. Our unrestricted fund balance at the end of the year stood at 35.8% compared to our 20% minimum threshold, and so, we exceeded the threshold by 35.9 million dollars. Now, I'm going to spend a little bit of time looking at the near-term financing, financing indicators of financial condition within the traditional fund statements. One of the key questions that we want to be able to answer has to do with the budgetary solvency of our governmental funds. And the first question is, are the county's annual revenues sufficient to pay for the annual budget? What you see on this chart shows 10 years of history, and for each year, it identifies the percentage that revenues made of expenditures. What we want to see ideally is for those data points to be right at or slightly above the 100% line. And so, what you can see on this chart is we have consistently been right below the 100% line. In 2020, our governmental fund revenues amounted to about 94% of our fund expenditures. To get a more reasonable picture of whether or not we were able to pay for our own operations, we use the operating solvency indicator, which takes the same revenue base and compares it to the governmental fund expenditures, excluding PBC, debt service, and debt proceeds. This is a measure of our operating solvency as opposed to a budgetary solvency measure. Again, we would like to be at, at or above the 100% line. We ended the year with revenues at about 106.5% of expenditures. Another question that we want to answer has to do with the flexibility of county finances. To what extent do we have full control over the use of our resources? And in order to answer those questions, we look at the total debt service, which is the total principal and interest obligations that the county has incurred as a percentage of all expenditures that we incur. To the extent that we have debt service expenditures, they're going to take priority over everything else because we have contractual obligations that we must fulfill. So, to the extent that we have those expenditures, they're going to assume the available resources that we have. At the end of the year, our debt service expenditures amounted to 3.9% of all governmental fund expenditures. You see on this chart that we have consistently been between 4% and 6% for the years, except for the years 2012 through 2014, and that's when our debt service expenditure spiked because we were engaging in a set of refundings, paying off bonds prematurely during those years. The next question we want to ask is whether or not the county has had any difficulty paying its short-term obligations. This is a measure of liquidity. This measure looks at the total cash and investments that the county has on hand at the end of the year as a percentage of the liabilities. What this chart shows is that at the end of 2020, our cash on hand amounted to $4.51 for every dollar of liability. This is the final measure of our near-term financing. How much are we relying on other areas of government to fund our activities? What is the total intergovernmental revenue as a percentage of total revenue? What we have seen over the past 10 years is that intergovernmental revenue has consistently been between 14% and 16% of all revenue within the governor, governmental funds, except for this year. This chart shows that typically, we're not heavily reliant on intergovernmental revenue to pay for our operations. But, again, in 2020, we received CARES funding, so the percentage for 2020 was 30.1% due to our COVID relief fund that we received. So, that's why it looks a little skewed this year compared to the previous years. Now, we will dive into the entity-wide financial statements. The entity-wide statements are statements that wrap all of the county's financial activity into a single set of financial statements on a full accrual basis, similar to what private businesses do. I begin with the county's net position or the county's net worth. The county had a net position at the end of 2020 of 531.4 million dollars, identified by the series of bars on the left-hand side of this chart. Each bar represents a separate year. 2020's ending net position of 531.4 is higher than 2015, when our net position was 504.9 million. Within each bar, you see the composition of our net position. The green segment identifies capital assets, net of any debt outstanding that was used to pay for those assets, and that total is 476.5 million. The blue segment represents restricted net position, and the nature of the restrictions is illustrated in the pie chart on the right. There are eight identified restricted funds listed. The county's total restricted net position at the end of 2020 was 44.4 million dollars, almost a million more than the previous year. The significant reduction in the restricted funds from 2017 to 2018 is due to the refunding of the 2008 PBC bonds for approximately 26 million dollars. Finally, there's a light blue line. It's a little hard to see. From 2015 through 2019, it's at the bottom. In 2020, it is at the top, and that represents our unrestricted net position. So, what we want to know with financial position, perhaps the most important question is, did we improve or did we deteriorate from year to year? What this chart shows is that our financial position improved by just over a half of a percent, which is a good indicator for our financial position going into 2021. In the statement of activities, our beginning net position, again, was 494.4 million dollars, and our ending position was 531.41 million. Our financial position improved because our revenues, as you can see here, exceeded our expenses by about 43 million dollars. One of the things that we're always concerned with is the extent to which various activities of the county are able to support themselves with our own self-generated revenue. We are not in the profit-making business, so we don't expect governmental activities to be fully self-supporting. so we don't expect governmental activities to be fully self-supporting. But to the extent that they can generate their own revenues, it means we don't have to provide tax dollars in order to support those activities. So what this chart shows are the various activities of the government. The functions of the government are represented by a bar, and within that bar, the total is the amount of expense that was incurred for the year. The green area is the amount of program revenue or self-generated revenue that the activity produced to pay its bills. And the blue area is the amount of the general revenue or tax support revenue that was necessary in order to pay the bills for that activity. What the chart shows is that the largest single activity of Sedgwick County in terms of expense is public safety. During 2020, we spent $163 million on public safety activities. Public safety was able to produce about $38 million of program revenue through jail fees and various grants to cover those bills, but the balance of $125 million was required to be provided by taxes levied on Sedgwick County citizens. So 77% of the public safety activities were provided by taxes. General government incurred $109 million in expenses. General government required about 5% tax support this year, and again, that's due to COVID funding. Health and welfare activities incurred about $56 million in expenses. There are different measures that can be looked at to determine the adequacy of financial position in entity-wide statements. What I'm going to focus on here is solvency measures, which looks at the county's ability to pay off its long-term debt with its assets. What we're doing in taking long-term liabilities as a percentage of the assets, and what we see is that at 2020, we ended the year with long-term liabilities equal to about 31% of our assets. In other words, 31 cents of every liability was covered by a dollar of an asset. The county is in good condition to pay off its long-term debt. Just to note, the 2014 increase from what traditionally had been around the 20% threshold was due to that debt refinancing that we talked about a little bit earlier. The 2015 spike up to about the 35% threshold is due to the CAPR's liability that we had to reflect on our books due to a new GASM requirement that came out. The last tab in the audit report is the statistical section. This section contains a lot of good information for anybody who might be interested in evaluating Sedgwick County's finances. I'm going to spend some time showing some of the indicators and some of the trends that can be identified by looking at those statistics. First, we'll look at the 10-year history of governmental revenues and expenditures, and this slide does have the CARES funding included in it. And I will also do this slide without the CARES funding to kind of show you the difference, so it's not as skewed. On this chart, the green represents revenue, so the blue represents expense. What we would hope to see here is that the green line is going to be above the blue line. So in 2020, that is the case, as revenues are 431.8 million and expenses are 388.9 million. You also see the extent to which revenues and expenses have grown over our 10-year period. Now, this is the same slide, but without the CARES funding. So you can see here, they're a little bit more in line. So again, the green is going to represent revenue, and the blue is going to represent expense. So in 2020, revenues are 322.8 million, and expenses are 337.9 million. The chart shows that neither have grown very much. In fact, during this time period, and then our expenses are staying pretty consistent. We can also determine where the county has been placing its emphasis over the past 10 years by looking at the change of expense over that 10-year period by function. And what this chart shows is the amount of increase or decrease in our expenses for 2020 versus 2011. And this one, this slide again includes CARES, and I'll show you the next slide, which takes CARES out of it. The greatest source of increases for county expenses over that 10-year period has been general government at 58.77 million, and 50.18 million of those expenses are related directly to CARES funding or COVID-related activities. Public safety expenses were 26.78 million. Cultural and recreation expenses increased 4.02 million over that 10-year period, and public work expenses decreased 1.51 million. Health and welfare experienced a substantial decrease of 9.64 million in expenses. That's a function of budget reductions that were made primarily in 2012, when the health and welfare activity incurred a 6.7% budget cut. And during that period of time, there was also reductions in staffing at Calm Care and Aging, and again, that's back in 2012. But this chart shows 2011 through 2020. Economic development had a $3.05 million decrease in expenses, and interest had a 2.12 million decrease in expenses. So this is without CARES funding. So this one is. The greatest source of increase here, again, is public safety. So if we can go back to some of our earlier charts, this shows more consistency without the CARES funding, and that's 26.78 million. General government only increased the 8.59. So you see a giant difference between with CARES funding and without. And public works expenses decreased 1.51 million, and health and welfare experienced a decrease of 10.5. Within our revenues, I've talked before about the expectations that activities generate program revenue as much as possible to pay for their own way, so that we don't have to tax citizens or tax additional. And what this chart shows is 10 years of history of property tax revenue, represented by the blue line, and the program revenue is represented by the green line. Property tax revenue was nearly $49 million higher at 202.27 versus 153.10 in 2011. Over that 10-year period, program revenue decreased 2011 through 2013. There were decreases in program revenue pretty consistently. And during that period of time, property taxes stayed relatively consistent. As a result, at the end of the 10-year period in 2020, property taxes now are substantially higher than program revenue, 202.27 million versus 185.62 million. What this chart shows is that over the past 10 years, the county has become increasingly reliant on property taxes as the principal funding stream to pay for accounting services. Because we are so reliant on property taxes, we pay a lot of attention to the collection rate. How effective are we at collecting property taxes that have been levied? The chart shows 10 years of history for our collection rates. The chart shows that this year's, the tax year that is funding the budget year, so for example, 2019's taxes are funding the 2020 budget. The most important thing to emphasize here is the county's collection rate, which is controlled principally by the activities of the county treasurer. At its very worst over the 10-year period, the county collected 96% of all taxes that had been levied. In other words, unpaid taxes represented less than 4% of the total levy. The tax year ended with a collection rate in 2020 of 97.98%, the highest collection rate that we do have on record. This indicates that the treasurer has been doing a very good job at collecting property taxes, which is important for us because we talked about earlier, that's our primary source of how we provide services to our citizens. We will now talk about long-term debt. What you see on this chart is 10 years of history for the county's outstanding debt. Each year is represented by a bar, and within each bar, there are different colors representing different categories of debt. In 2020, the county had 47.8 million of general obligation debt. That's the green at the bottom. We had 1.9 million of special assessment debt. That's the thin blue line that's immediately above the green. And we had 82.4 million of the PBC debt. We had a very slight amount of about 1.5 million of lease debt, represented by the fire apparatus, and that's the black line at the very top that is really hard to see. What this chart shows is that the general obligation debt of the county has decreased steadily since its peak in 2012 at 86.8 million, down to 48, 47.8 million. The PBC debt started decreasing in 2012 and 2013, but then spiked again in 2014. That was caused by a refunding that we did in that year, so we sold additional debt for that refunding. And it was caused by the PBC's funding of the building for the Wichita State University on the new Innovation Campus. And again, that debt will only be repaid with the proceeds of the special property tax that is levied for WSU. Here in the statistics section, there are some charts that show 10 years of data about the county's performance, and this is what the citizens are most interested in. So what did they get for their money? So let's begin with public safety activities. In 2020, we averaged nearly 42,447 calls per month in our emergency communication center, the 911 center, and that was a 5% decrease from last year and a 14% increase from 10 years ago. EMS responded to about 5,476 calls per month in 2020. That's a 1% decrease from last year and a 21% increase from 10 years ago. In the juvenile detention facility, the average daily population was 44. That's 20% less than last year, and then 60% less than 10 years previously. The adult detention facility had 1,503 people in custody on average every day last year. That's a 2% decrease from the previous year and no change from 10 years ago. We provided these public safety activities with 1,418 employees at the end of 2020. That's a 3% decrease from the previous year and a 4% decrease from 10 years ago. In terms of fire service, the fire department reported that in 2020, they responded to 102 residential fire structures per 100,000 households. That is represented as a 45% decrease from one year ago and a 38% increase from 10 years ago. In 2020, the fire service responded to an average of 311 medical calls per month, and that's a 15% decrease from the previous year, but a 51% increase from 10 years ago. And the number of fire district stations is nine, and that has not changed from one or 10 years ago. In health and welfare services, Calm Care saw 11,467 mental health clients in 2020, which is a decrease of 27% from one year ago and a 5% decrease from 10 years ago. CDDO, the Community Development Disabilities Organization, had 2,604 citizens of Sedgwick County who were eligible to receive its services. It's a 1% increase from the prior year and a 12% increase from 10 years ago. The number of health and welfare employees that provided this service is 524 in 2020. That's a 3% increase from last year and a 6% decrease from 10 years ago. In public health service, we had patient encounters, which are also known as appointments, with 316,490 clients. So that's 150% increase from one year and a 93% increase from 10 years ago. So the number of immunizations that were provided was 14,919. It's a 22% decrease from last year and a 51% decrease from 10 years ago. In culture and recreation, the Sedgwick County Zoo had attendance of 302,901, and that's a decrease of 42% from last year and then a 45% decrease from 10 years ago. And we did see that the zoo had to close down for a little bit due to the pandemic, so that's why these numbers look really skewed. The annual attendance at the Sedgwick County Parks, this had the opposite effect during the pandemic. So we saw 1,073,618 people. It's an 8% increase from the prior year and then a 4% increase from 10 years ago. And all of these services were provided with 107 employees, which is a 6% increase from last year and a 2% increase from 10 years ago. Now, this slide looks really bad, and this, again, is due to the pandemic. So again, due to the pandemic, the Interest Bank Arena was only able to host 29 events in 2020, and that's going to be a 69% decrease from the prior year. The annual attendance was 140,126 people, which is a 60% decrease from the prior year. And profit returned to the county since the arena opened is $2,875,710. In public works, the number of road miles improved was 101. It's a 4% decrease from the prior year and a 17% decrease from 10 years ago. The number of miles that Public Works is responsible for in Sedgwick County was 609. That's no change from last year and a 3% decrease from 10 years ago. The number of household hazardous waste tons that were disposed in 2020 was 586. It's a 7% decrease from the prior year and a 10% decrease from 10 years ago. Public Works provided all these services with 121 employees, which is a 5% decrease from last year and a 9% increase from 10 years ago. Finally, in the general government section, in 2020, we served 322,575 voters. That's a 7% increase from the prior year and a 24% increase from 10 years ago. We dealt with 217,966 taxable real estate parcels, which is a 1% increase from a year ago and a 2% increase from 10 years ago. The register of deeds processed more than 89,683 documents, which is a 23% increase from the prior year and a 31% increase from 10 years ago. The register of deeds and the county clerk together processed 79,348 real estate records in 2020, which is a 7% increase from the prior year and a 47% increase from 10 years ago. And all of these services were provided by 416 general government employees, which is a 2% increase from the prior year, but a 7% decrease from 10 years ago. And again, I just wanted to point out that some of the data might look really skewed because of the pandemic, so hopefully next year, we'll get some better, well, in two years, we'll get some better percentages going from year to year. So over the past 10 years, Sedgwick County has become a much more efficient organization. And the good news for our citizens to take away from this last part of the presentation with the pretty slides is that we are able to provide more services, and people are using those services. So with that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you guys might have about all this information that I just gave you.
Hope, thanks for walking us through this. It's great information. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just want to start off by saying this is probably the best annual report that I think I've seen since I've been a commissioner. So thank you for the great work, our BKD auditors, great job, and Lindsay especially. Tremendous job. I think it represents a super-quality management within all the financial world. Good job to everybody. And I just want to say I'm very impressed, especially in 2020, with we had all that extra accounting that had to happen. I'm very impressed with how we came out in 2020. So overall, it's pretty positive. I think the report is positive. I do have just a couple of quick questions or comments. On slide 23, just to note here, the numbers on the right side of that slide, on those two lines, I think are backwards. That actually was a negative. We actually had more expenses than revenues on that slide. Is that correct? On the end, 337 and 322 are reversed on those two data points?
You said slide 23. Was that right?
322 should be the green line, and 337 should be the blue line? Am I seeing that correctly?
Let me pull that up real quick. My lovely spreadsheet. Okay, yep. Yeah, you are correct. They were flipped.
I want to make sure I understand the chart. Very good. And then on slide 27, I want to, I want to just explore this slide just a little bit. So the 96% collection rate of taxes was just a one-year snapshot, I believe. If we go back and look at the delinquent taxes going back four years, when there's interest applied, and I don't know if anybody knows what the interest rate is, but it's fairly substantial. It's like 9%, I believe, interest on delinquent tax. But if you go, there are some property taxpayers that are struggling with paying that the first year, and they pay it later. And so over the period of four years before it goes to a tax sale, and even if it does go to a tax sale, we pay, I guess, the county back first with whatever delinquent taxes are due, the county plus interest. And so once that process is complete, our collection rate, I believe, is very, very close to 100%. So does anybody know the number of uncollected taxes that would happen after the entire process runs its course?
I do not, but I can get that information.
I believe it's down way below a half percent. It's like 0.15%. It's very small. And so when someone sees this slide by itself, you get the idea that, you know, 4% of the people aren't paying their taxes. But the rest of the picture is that they do pay their taxes with interest, like 9% applied. At the end of the day, before it goes to a tax sale, they will pay that delinquent tax with interest applied. And should it go to a tax sale, we get it paid back first. And so the amount of tax that's ultimately not collected is a very, very small number. I think we need to keep that in mind. And so if anybody wants to clarify anything I just said or correct me if I'm, you know, whatever, I may have said it may be incorrect, please, I'd like to welcome those comments because I think we need to understand the full picture here. There's been some desire by some people to There's been some desire by some people to shorten this four years down to two years, for example. And I think that when you understand how much we actually don't collect, it's a very small number, like 0.15%. So, okay. And then I want to make sure I understand on, I believe it's on, by the way, the COVID really did impact a lot of these performance numbers. On this slide, talk about number of public safety employees is 1418. Does that include the fire district?
No, it does not.
It is not. Okay. I'll just say overall, I'm very, very impressed with these metrics. I love the one-year snapshot, but I just, I'm just, I love data. If the data is sitting out there on an Excel spreadsheet somewhere that I can see the data going back each year on these types of measurements, I'd love to get access to that. Because I think to look at a one-year change and 10-year change is interesting, but I'd love to see the trends. So if I, if there's any way to get access to more than just the one and 10-year, if that data is available, I would like to look.
Yeah, in the statistical section of the audit report, it breaks it out for the last 10 years. But we can also get you some additional information if you want. But just if anyone else is wanting to look at that information, it's in the back of the book and it starts on E4, but it breaks out the last 10 years.
Just one other. It is interesting, some of the things, I think COVID had a huge impact on almost every metric on this list, which is, some things are, I mean, it says at County Park, for example, more visitors and doing outdoor things. That's interesting. The number of calls to 911 actually went down for one year and the EMS calls went down. That's a little surprising to me, but the end of the day, this is very interesting data. So again, thank you for presenting that to us and providing that. I just want to say thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chairman.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Thank you, Hope, for your presentation. It was always well thought out. I appreciate it. Page nine, I believe Lindsay might be going over a little bit later in the report, so I want to dive deeper into that. But I just want to point out slide number 30, if you could bring that up. I think it's slide 30. It's the one with public safety service.
Is this the one?
Yep.
Okay.
So I believe, if I'm looking at this correctly, the average daily juvenile population in detention, those numbers tell me that prevention is working in this area. If you look at over the past 10 years, when Glenda's here, she's talking about prevention programs. We're talking about, just yesterday, we talked about going upstream to get people. So I'm really excited to see this stat because that just shows me, and I think it should show all of us, that prevention is working in the juvenile section. So I hope that we learn from these numbers that prevention could also work with adults and start funding that as well. So I appreciate that, and that's all my questions and comments.
Okay. Good point. I don't see any other questions at this point, Hope. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate it again. Okay. Next up, do we do a receive and file on this? Probably so. Can I make a motion to receive and file? Been a motion in a second. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to comment on that number, the 60% reduction in 10 years for the average daily juvenile population detention. I would just like to point out the state has changed their strategy on these juveniles. And so there's a, there's a change in the way that the state has regulated this. And so we're doing a lot more community-based programs and less detention. That's just a strategy that the state has taken. So the number of kids overall in the system, if you count those that are getting community-based services that would have otherwise been in detention, you might get a different number. But I think we ought to look at that, knowing that the laws have changed, especially, again, especially Senate Bill 367 in 2017 would be partly why I think that number's changed. But thank you, Chairman.
Well, thank you for your comments, Commissioner Howell. I do believe, though, what we're seeing, regardless of who is changing, it needs to change in regards to prevention. So I appreciate your comments, but my point is that prevention works no matter who sets those regulations, and we should learn from that.
Okay. I don't see any other comments. Make a motion to receive and file?
Second.
Been a motion in a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thanks again, Hope and Lindsay and our friends, auditor friends. So thank you again. All right. Next up, or next item, please, sorry.
Item F, acceptance of donations of personal protective equipment from Sam's Club for COVID-19 response.
Good morning, Julie.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. I present to you today and acknowledge and a donation, a lot of appreciation for Sam's Club and Wichita Crimes Commission for a donation of 1,000 face masks, or face shields, to the Sedgwick County Emergency Management to be distributed to the first responder community. The face shields were valued at approximately $8,000 and will be distributed to first responders throughout the county. A letter of appreciation is on behalf of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. Thank you for your continued support during the COVID pandemic response effort. We would like to recognize Sam's Club and the Wichita Crime Commission for their donation of 1,000 face shields valued at approximately $8,000 to Sedgwick County. These face shields will be given to our very own first responder community who have sacrificed so much over the past year. The acknowledgement and acceptance of this gift is being presented to you today. The generosity reminds us all that we can make a difference in overcoming whatever emergency comes our way. We all need to do our part to reduce the spread of the virus as much as we can, and small changes in our routine, like wearing a face covering, will help that effort. This donation will support the work of the Sedgwick County first responders in the field. Please accept our deepest appreciation for thinking of others to overcome the challenges that lie ahead for Sedgwick County.
Julie, thank you for bringing this to our attention and putting it on our agenda. And obviously, thank you, Sam's. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for the report. I appreciate it. One morning, I got a call from Mike Hill. Everybody knows and loves Mike Hill, old ex sheriff. And he's also the president of Crime Commission. And he said, hey, I just got a call from Sophia Sawyer, who is the manager at Sam's, and she would like to donate protective equipment to our first responders. And especially, she's also a member of the Crime Commission. That it went to the Crime Commission, and then the Crime Commission made sure that it got to our first responders. And so as things rolled downhill, I got ahold of the manager and said, Mr. Manager, can you take care of this? And as things rolled down the hill, he passed it off to you. So bottom line is, I sincerely appreciate your efforts in working with Sam's Club to get this personal protective equipment to our first responders. And I sincerely want to thank Sam's Club for what they did to make sure that our first responders throughout the county are protected. So thanks for working this. Thanks for allowing this to roll downhill to you. But I appreciate what you've done and your efforts. And again, thanks very much to Sam's Club. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for, another example of a commissioner being able to recognize an opportunity and bringing it to our commission. So thank you, and I'll make a motion to accept the donation of the personal PPE equipment from Sam's Club for COVID-19 response.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks again, Julie.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Next item, please.
Item G, consideration of a grant in an amount not to exceed $230,145 for the DNA capacity enhancement for backlog reduction program.
Good morning. Shelley Stedman, Director, Regional Forensic Science Center. And I'm here today seeking your approval for an application submission for the DNA capacity enhancement and backlog reduction grant in the amount not to exceed $230,145. We often refer to this as the SEBER grant. This program is administered now by the Bureau of Justice Assistance. It is a formula grant, which means an amount of money is assigned to our state, and it has to be shared between the three agencies that provide DNA testing services. So by the time Johnson County, the KBI, and the Regional Forensic Science Center gather proper quotes from vendors for the equipment and services we desire and enter into negotiations with each other about our needs, we end up with a pretty aggressive timeline to get our applications in. As you know, the Forensic Science Center operates with heavy volume of technology, both in the form of software and instrumentation. And that instrumentation must be well-maintained and in good working condition. To that end, to stay in compliance with the FBI quality assurance standards and our accreditation requirements, we are required to have those instruments undergo an annual preventative maintenance. Often that includes some form of calibration to ensure data reliability and accuracy. So the greater portion of this award money is going to be used to provide those annual performance verifications on the critical instrumentations that we use to extract, quantify, and type DNA samples. Other items we would like to purchase include additional computer workstations and proprietary interpretation software for the two DNA analysts we currently have in training. Those scientists in training also have to do lab practical exercises, which costs supplies and consumables, so we'd like to use some of the funding for that. And there are a couple of items we would like to purchase to improve our workflow, which includes an alternate light source that allows us to detect biological stains that are not visible in incandescent light, and also some modular tables that will allow us to screen large items of evidence, like clothing and bedding. This is a grant we've relied upon for many years. It's generally 200,000 to 300,000 annually. It was previously administered by the National Institute of Justice, but in 2020, the Bureau of Justice Assistance began managing this grant. And because of that, some of the timing on the notification and the project periods, some other timelines have changed. But all of the underlying documents and the standard grant assurances have remained the same. And you were provided drafts of those underlying documents last week. None of those have changed and have gone through all proper approvals that would normally occur for any grant. With that, I would, I'll do my best to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Well, thank you, Doctor. And I know that each of us had the ability to go into detail with you and appreciate the meetings that you had to help us understand further. So I don't see any questions. I'll make a motion to accept this consideration of a grant and not to exceed the numbers and as presented. Motion in a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks again. Have a good day. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item H, consideration of grant applications in the amount of $185,949 for two low-floor ramp accessible vehicles and an in-vehicle security camera system.
Good morning, Commissioners. Annette Graham, Department on Aging. I'm bringing before you today a grant to Kansas Department of Transportation. This is a competitive grant opportunity offered by KDOT for access, innovation, and collaboration projects. This funding is federal transit administration dollars allocated to the state of Kansas for distribution to subrecipients, and we are a current subrecipient for those. The Sedgwick County Department on Aging is planning to submit two projects. One project will include two low-floor ramp accessible vehicles, and the other project will be for an all, an in-vehicle security camera system. The vehicle request is to replace two vehicles. The first is a 2012 Ford E350 Cutaway, and the second is a 2016 Dodge minivan. Both vehicles have met their useful life established by the FTA of 100,000 miles or five years. The minivan is five years old and has 125,000 miles. And I will just mention that that vehicle has had a lot of maintenance issues already within the last year, and it has had a lot of time off of the road due to that. The Cutaway vehicle is nine years old and has 195,000 miles. The cost of the low-floor ramp accessible vehicle is expected to be $96,218 each. The Sedgwick County Department on Aging is also requesting $40,000 for the second project, which is a purchase of a security camera system for the seven-vehicle fleet that we currently have. The cameras will include interior and exterior views. The presence of cameras in vehicles benefits both passengers and drivers by providing visual evidence of any incidents or vehicle accidents, other things that could happen. The grant period would start October 1st, 2021, and ends June 30th, 2024. The grant amount is $185,949. Required match is $46,487 for a total project amount of $232,436. The source of the matching fund would be Millevy, and that's included in our 2022 budget request, as is the additional budget authority. I would be happy to answer any questions and request that you approve and sign the authorized documents.
Okay. Are there any questions for Annette on this item? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to accept this application consideration of grant. There's a motion in a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Annette. Have a good day. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item I, hearing for the proposed adoption of the 2019 Safety Code for Elevators and Escalators, ASMA 17.1.
Chris, I'm sure that the public is eager to hear your report here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Labram, for the record, Director of MABCD. And yes, our topics are always riveting, I know. Elevator safety code adoption today. This updates Article 4 of the Unified Building and Trade Code. It does include the baseline national code and our local amendments as stated in the intro. It is a national standard to society of mechanical engineers. The electrical elevator, et cetera, codes in Mr. Nordic's section are national versus international standards just due to the baseline service provider there is, of course, different country to country. And as stated, covers both elevators and escalators, though all of our changes affect elevators. And a reminder that we try to keep up every three years with updating our trades codes each time the new version comes out to keep up with changing technology. So I do have a list for you here of the codes that this has been coordinated with and that it affects within the department. We have no issues there. And especially since the commissioners have seen most of this before, I'll press through it pretty quickly and definitely stop me if you have questions. Latest adoption of this was done in August of 17, which was the 2016 standard with 23 amendments. This changes us to the 19 version. We were able to reduce by 18 amendments. It's always something we're very happy to see, too, is when the baseline code incorporates things we've had in local amendments, and we no longer need those. We also were able to delete a few sections that are now covered in general portions of our code. So always, again, trying to trim down any redundancy, not to not give contractors extra pages to be responsible for. So that allowed us to take eight sections in total out of our UBTC. We did have to add one section back. I have a slide for that about the 911 protocol. It was a relatively minor inclusion. And then the last note there where this code does relate to the 2017 standard, when we spoke in staff meeting, the 2020 version of that code had not yet been released. It now has been. So it is under review. So far, we do not see any significant changes within that code. The adoption of this was led, the review and adoption effort, I should say, was led by our Board of Electrical Appeals. I want to thank them for the great work all of them did on this. That's a very, very good board. Does a lot of really good work and a lot of good coordination with the industry for us. Also, industry associations, the Elevators Contractors Association, they're actually based out of Kansas City, where we don't have that many contractors in the area. That's more of a regional representation. That does also accommodate the local union. And then both fire departments here and in the city were heavily involved and reviewed this for us based on, obviously, their response. And then we also had the local BOMA, Building Owners and Managers Association, involved in this since they are the most impacted by any changes to cost or equipment requirements. We do, our changes to current practices are really, really not that substantial, but they do meet our definition of things that we want to ensure the public is made aware of that will change current practices within our, within our process and procedures. So by, and we will, of course, cover those individually. By way of timeline, we set the public hearing for this on May 12. We then, of course, are at the public hearing today. We have the city council presentation, depending and assuming all goes as planned today for July 6. July 6th, again, assuming no issues there, October 1st of this year will be the effective date. To cover the specifics that, that we want to hit, one of the changes, there are two parts to this, but it's one of the, the changes in ads, is the one that requires new elevators to have emergency signaling devices. This would begin, as you see here, with having a message display panel to allow communication in the car if, for either someone hearing impaired or for any other reason verbal communication is not available, and this, again, would be monitored by the elevator monitoring system that is in place. So elevator contractors, usually their maintenance contractor is the one who monitors that. As an example, for this building, security is the monitor of the elevator, so any communication that happens in the car goes through them. They're the ones that are notified of, if the emergency button, et ceteras, is pushed there. Second part of the car signaling device is, again, the video display, so this allows those who are monitoring the elevator to have a video visual of what's happening, then also would be able to, to potentially communicate that way, but more so this gives them the exact of what's going on in the car, especially then if a 911 call needs to be made, that would expedite that. On the flip side, having all of this in elevators and having those monitoring systems in place reduces a lot of calls that would otherwise be going to 911, maybe even for someone just accidentally pushing an emergency button. On the residential side, up until now, code has required an actual elevator door for those residential-type structures that do put a lift or an elevator in place, that we're removing that so that they would be able to have a regular door that matches all the others in the home and door frame there, so we have criteria to ensure that is still safe with the elevator, but allow that for both cost and aesthetics to allow it, again, to be in this, this method. And then, as I've mentioned a few times, with emergency communications, so when we deleted a few requirements last time, the language that we took out left it open to interpretation that someone could potentially have their calls and monitoring in an elevator go straight to 911. We don't want that to happen. 911 is busy enough, so you, you Laura would not appreciate that in any way. So we just have added that back in to ensure that it is clear that, that that initial call, and then especially on the new elevators, the video and text display are monitored, at least initially, by the elevator company. They're the only ones that are allowed to see that, and then they are trained to get that to 911 in the cases where that is required. So with that, it is staff's recommendation that we receive any public comment, close the public hearing, and adopt the 2019 Safety Code for Elevators and Escalators with the local amendments. I'll gladly stand for any questions.
All right. Chris, thanks for the presentation, and we reviewed this in the first hearing, but I, I'm comforted personally that, on your slide number five, that you engaged all those, all those groups to be involved in the process and a thorough job. Elevators are an expensive item, and so, but thanks for, for updating us. Is there any other comments or questions for Chris with this? Commissioner Dennis?
Do we need to open the public hearing before we have comments? I do have a question.
Okay. Well, then, let's open it up for public, anybody from the public like to address the Commission on this item? I don't see any, so we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the, to the bench. So Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Two things real quick, minor. One is that I see that it's going before the city council in the near future, and this is just like all the different codes that you operate, that are joint codes between Wichita and Sedgwick County, correct?
Correct.
And this is routine that, that goes between both bodies because they are combined operations, regulations, and so forth.
That, that's exactly right, Commissioner. So that, we do not hold a public hearing on that side. The public hearing is here, and then the city council will ratify, will be asked to ratify the action taken by the BOCC today.
Very good. But since it's routine, why, we don't need an en banc for doing routine actions like this, correct?
I, I would say that's correct, sir.
Okay. Very good. That's my one question. My other one's a comment. Mike Papoun, our distinguished county attorney, is still very concerned about elevator number one, because every time you get on it, it sounds like you're gonna die, so.
I, I noticed one of the display numbers is out, too. I've, I do have Mr. Nordic here, who would also be happy to take any questions, and we'll take a look at that on the way out.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Chairman. I feel pretty comfortable about this, about this presentation, and thank you for doing a good job. I do apologize for not asking all of my questions prior to this moment, but I do have just a couple of short ones. I think they're fairly easy. On the, let's show the slide eight here, the video display, that's for commercial buildings only, for new elevators only?
That is correct. That's, so in the case of a remodel or an update, or if any other reason, a company wanted to put that in, it's obviously authorized, but it is only required in brand-new, newly-installed elevators.
So if you repair an existing elevator, it, it would be grandfathered unless they replace the elevator, then would it have to be brought to, to that?
That is, that's correct.
Okay. I am curious, is there, is there capabilities on these elevators to record the audio and video of what's going on in that elevator for, in terms of, say, there's a crime that's committed, would that be, something would be subpoenaed to get that evidence, that type of thing?
And that, I don't know if you have, I know that's limited, based on the, the rules that they follow. I don't know how long they would be able to retain that. I don't, yeah, I, and I know that is, that, that goes through the monitoring, monitoring service and the rules that they follow. The extent of that, I, I do not know. But I could get that for you, Commissioner.
Yeah, are, are the cameras easy to identify, or is there, is this somewhat like a camera that you can't tell it's in the room or in the elevator, because there might be some type of notification requirements to let people know that you're being recorded and audio and video is being recorded, type of thing?
No, they didn't, and I'll, I'll make sure, make sure I get this right, Chris, but yeah, so only when you push the emergency button would that activate. And so at that point, the technician monitoring would get an alert, they would then energize that equipment, and so that's when that would, that was, when that would come in, into play. So obviously, as with anything, there would be some level of recording, some ability to get that. I believe it would have to be in, subpoenaed through law enforcement, court-type action to use that for any other type of evidence.
Okay. Like, for example, when police officers use their body cams, they push that button to start recording the record, it actually has a buffer, so it actually backs up and records what happened already prior to them pushing the button. I would just like to know whether that's, I just like to know how this works.
Yeah, to, to my knowledge, that would not be, because this is designed, this is not designed to monitor the car, it's designed as a communication device in the event of an elevator emergency or event.
And right now, before this adoption, they do have options for two-way communication, audible communication. If you were, if you pushed that button today, you would, you would speak to somebody, they would be able to speak back and forth with you, that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I, I'll, I'll be glad to support this. I don't know that I, I don't know how much money this adds to the cost. I think it should be an option, obviously, but I am a little concerned about regulating additional costs to things that people may not use much if ever, and so I'm a little con, I don't know if you have a sense of how often do, how many calls come in per, per month or whatever in Central County? Do we know that type of number?
Yeah, we, we don't track that. We know it is a lot.
Oh, it is a lot.
It is a lot.
Okay.
Because, again, a lot of people accidentally lean against the button, push the button when they mean to hit another one. So, so we know there are several a day that take place.
Well, generally speaking, I think the audio is probably reasonably good for most situations, and the, the screen, I think, is great because it's an ADA thing for folks that can't, can't communicate audibly, but there's also with language barriers as well. So that's, that's another challenge of just, you know, people may not be able to understand what they're reading or, or speak back, you know, communicate back to the person that's, that's controlling that screen. I'm not sure that they have a way to actually talk back in that case, because that's, that becomes a one-way communication if they can receive it.
And, and this actually gives the option for text back, so, so there is a level of two-way communication that, that, that can be opened up with these.
Okay, that sounds interesting. And then I do agree, I think the idea of removing the doors is a good, a good change. And then, I guess my final question would be this, where, where is this elevator dispatch? I assume that's not local. That must be something much larger than just a.
And, and that, that depends on the elevator manufacturer and their company. Most are regional, but then again, as, as mentioned, for example, our building is monitored by the security desk, by our security personnel within the building, so there, there are different arrangements, different agreements, but generally, similar, very similar to home alarm monitoring service is the way that these are, are set up.
All right. Well, thank you for the answers to my questions, and I'll be glad to support the, the changes this morning.
All right, yes. Thank you, Commissioner. And cost is obviously, especially right now, a little bit of a moving target. We know that becomes a factor in a remodel, but again, they have the option there. One, while this does, is of course, going to add an overall cost where elevators are going that direction, you are also going to see some savings there since that's, that's the model they're mainly selling. So, so we did not see it as a significant increase in, in cost associated with a new elevator.
Okay. I don't see any other questions? Being done, I'll make a motion to approve this as, as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Aye. Thanks again. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item J, update on COVID-19 fiscal response.
Good morning, Lindsay. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Chairman. It is my pleasure. Commissioners, Lindsay Porgso, your CFO. We will get to the question that Commissioner Cruz mentioned earlier, but that's going to be a little later in my COVID presentation, if that's okay. So we have a lot to talk through today. We're going to talk about the COVID spending, where we stand today, then we're going to talk about what we're going to do with remaining CARES funds, then we will talk about the American Rescue Plan, where we stand with that, and our plan, what we've already done. So with that, we will jump into it. The first thing we're going to talk about, like always, is the COVID spending status. So how much have we spent on items related to COVID since we started? So since we had our first expense on March 17th, 2020, we have spent $119,853,909 on COVID-related expenses. Truly a staggering sum. So if we look at non-CARES COVID spending, and we're going to come back to this later in the presentation, because when I'm going to talk about this first part, we're talking about expenses out of the county's general fund. So HOPE presented the audit to you that talked about 2020, but that, of course, doesn't look at 2021. And so that fund balance that we talked about, that extra on that slide nine, we're going to dip into that quite a bit this year. So, so far, in the general fund this year, or I'm sorry, since COVID started, we have So the last time we talked on May 19th, that was about 1.9 million less. Since then, we have spent about another 1.4 million in those additional temp, staff-agency costs. In addition, another 241,000 on temporary staff who are actually employed by Sedgwick County, not through temporary staffing agency. We've also spent around 50,000 for marketing, 40,000 for financial professional services. Again, a lot of that is the consulting services that we receive in finance to operate all of this. 15,000 for cleaning services, and then many other miscellaneous costs. Now, of that 15.7 million that we have spent out of the county general fund since this all started, 14.3 million has occurred this year. And so that is something that we intend to use that fund balance that HOPE had talked about to support. So we'll get into that a little bit later. Now, on that front, obviously, we know ARPA is coming, and so what we are planning to do is go ahead and cut off the spending in the general fund as of June 30th, which was the original plan that we talked with you about. Now, the exceptions to that are health department and emergency management for COVID-related functions that are necessary, and we'll get into why that is when we get to the ARPA discussion. We haven't had any changes in our non-CARES spending for the fire district or for our other grant funding that we've reported on to you previously. So now, let's talk about CARES. We have been told by our consultants, it's time to wrap CARES up. Not that we don't know that already, but they have said, you know, we really need to be able to move our full focus to ARPA. There's a lot of opportunities for confusion between CARES and ARPA, and so they're recommending that we move forward. So where we stand today is that of the 99.6 million that we received, we have actually spent or contracted to spend 94,367,414. Of that, 55.5 million roughly has been spent on the county's COVID-related response. Another 37.2 million has been spent to support schools, cities, safe operating grant entities, and those stimulus review team recommended entities that were able to substantiate their awards. So of course, 5 million went to schools, 14.8 million of the 15 million allocation for cities has been paid out. We have paid 15.5 million to the public health and social service entities, and we have now paid all of those entities that have qualified. There will not be any more expenses toward that program. Now, when we had originally made those allocations, or that review team had made recommendations, they had said, let's spend 19.363 million. Like I said, we have spent 15.453. So we'll talk about how we want to reallocate those funds here in a moment. So at the end of the day, we started with 99,636,917, to be precise. I told you how much we have spent, and so that leaves 5,269,503 that remain. I'm going to wrap up our spending, and then we'll talk about that CARES issue again. On the Spark spending front, if you remember, that was the 9.3 million that we received from the state from their CARES allocation. We got that because we had the unfortunate distinction of having the highest unemployment in the state. All of that was allocated toward workforce. All of that has been spent. We have reported on all of that to the state, and they have actually given us a closeout letter telling us that they are happy, basically, with what we have reported thus far. So that's a significant accomplishment. So now, let's get to CARES. So this is CARES wrap-up. So what you had approved for the first time last year on July 8th was a spending plan for CARES. Those plans were updated in September, in October, and then again in December. Now, at your December 16th meeting, you allocated the authority to Tom to make CARES spending plan adjustments. So as of yesterday, we made a request, and I want to outline that request for you now. Again, we've been strongly encouraged by our consultants to wrap up CARES. So we know that thus far this year, we have spent 8,599,425 on temporary employment agency services related to direct COVID response, whether that be testing or vaccines, mostly vaccines. We also know we have another $762,000 in invoices working through the process at this moment, which would bring our spending up above 9 million for our COVID response. We also heard an estimate from the health department yesterday that to sustain our operations at the level that's necessary through December, that will cost an additional 7.2 million. That includes things like continued vaccinations, testing, outreach, disease investigation, and incident command. So given all of that, and given that Tom was given that authority to update the spending plan, we have requested from him the authority to reallocate that 5.3 million that we referenced earlier toward temporary employment services. Because we were paying for those in 2020 under that contract, we know that those are eligible expenses to be paid from CARES this year. And so if we can simply shift those costs out of the general fund and into the out of the general fund and into the CARES funding, that gives us some flexibility in the general fund, which is helpful, as we know, with the American Rescue Plan we've talked about. It'll take some time to get that stood up. We know that we're required to go through federal procurement rules, so we'll have to go through bid and proposals in order to make purchases. So having that flexibility in the general fund, since we've already spent the bulk of the 15 million you've allocated in the general fund, that will allow us to bridge that gap so that we can make sure the Health Department is still able to provide that frontline COVID response that's necessary. So the commission can certainly vote on that spending plan if necessary, if you feel it's necessary, but that authority has been given to Tom, and he is comfortable with that approach. So unless this commission chooses to do that, that will be the approach we would want to take. So if it's okay, because we are talking about American Rescue Plan, if I can jump into that a little bit, because I think this will close this out neatly, and then we can come back to questions or discussion. We know that the after-action review is being done on CARES now. We should have a report within a week so that we will know what lessons to improve upon as we start structuring our American Rescue Plan dollars. You heard about our fantastic audit this morning, which I'll take this opportunity to say yay team. And that, I appreciate the kudos to finance, but that was truly, especially on the CARES. The commission set a directive, set policy, didn't waive from that. Our department heads participated, our senior management participated. So this is really something I think the organization ought to be very proud of. So there's my little plug for a second. So I do have the pleasure to share that on the American Rescue Plan, once we do know our processes and plans, and we'll talk about that in a moment, we have received, as of June 1st, 50,117,554.50. If you remember when ARPA was passed, they said that it would come in two tranches, one tranche this year, one tranche next year. We have received our first tranche. So that is currently sitting in the county's bank account. We have hired the grant analyst. She has started work. We have done an internal needs assessment. All of that information was returned last week. We got more than 40 departmental responses. I think there were only three folks who said, we don't really think we have COVID-related needs. So that's pretty amazing. So that team is going through that information today, and we will have a lot of discussion coming soon about what those urgent needs are for a spending plan that we want to ask you to approve next month. We know that one of those urgent needs is premium pay for county employees. Now, one of the things that we have learned recently that I think is a big change from what we thought we would hear is that premium pay is expected to look backwards. It is expected to look at those folks who were exposed to more risk during the height of the pandemic, maybe March of last year, and we can look at our data indicators and what we feel like makes sense for this year. But that premium pay is to focus on those employees. It's not looking forward, and I think we expected it to look forward. And so we are working with our eligibility consultants now to understand how we need to apply that. There are several twists and turns in the ARPA guidance about level of pay relative to the median pay for the state and the county. So this is unfortunately not going to be easy, but we are going to ask for the right help, and we'll make sure to involve you in that conversation as it goes. But one of the things that we learned about premium pay is if you did telework, you are not eligible. You had to be exposed to more risk. And again, I think that changes a little bit from where we thought it would be. We also, on all of the other needs, are focused to make sure that there is a tie to COVID, that we can assess the level of harm that was caused due to COVID, and then ARPA requires that our response is tailored to meet that need. And we will be responsible for developing performance measures and metrics that we will be responsible to report each year in July to the feds related to that. I think we've all heard that the feds did create an Office of Recovery, and so we know that that means, just like anything, those folks will need to justify their existence, right? And so we do expect more intensive monitoring and reporting to come with ARPA. And so I think we just need to all be prepared for that. So in terms of timeline, this is awfully tiny on these screens. I should have brought my glasses. But what you can see is a document here, this looks very similar to the chart that we were given at the beginning of CARES from Wood O'Brien's. This was prepared by them. So as we talked about, we're going through the after-action report, we're wrapping up CARES now. What we are starting on, I talked about the internal needs assessment. Now we need to start talking about that external needs assessment. And so that external needs assessment is posted on our website. I know Akeem mentioned it earlier during the intro comments. We very much want the public's response. It's really simple. It's a really quick and easy survey. Tell us your top six priorities of the eligible buckets that we've been told we can spend our ARPA money on, and then we'll use that to try and begin crafting an external plan. Now, that survey is just the first part. You'll see on this timeline that our Wood O'Brien's project manager that we've engaged is actually going to lead some focus groups for us with the community the week of July 18th. And so that group started with that COVID task force. It's expanded to include cities. We'll be talking about others, but those will be some opportunities to really delve into and understand the needs. We'll also be engaging with Jeremy Hill and others to get data, because maybe not all the voices are reflected in the needs assessment or in those focus groups. We want the data to tell a story. I think you remember at your February workshop, how much that data really told us some new information that we didn't necessarily know or hadn't heard. So we're going to take all of that to package a spending plan. Yes, sir?
Excuse me. Commissioner Cruz has a question.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman. So on the website, when people go to click on the survey, is there a way to make it crystal clear that the buckets that are there are what we can actually spend the money on? Because there has been some questions around, well, I have other priorities, my initiative isn't on this list.
Absolutely.
Is there a way to, these are eligible expenses?
Yes, we can definitely work on improving that language to make that clearer. I totally understand where people are coming from on that.
I, it's easy to use. I took the survey myself.
Good.
But I just want to make sure that the community understands, these are the eligible things that we can spend this money on.
Absolutely. That's good feedback. We'll make sure that happens.
Thank you.
And a quick question I have, is this by chance being coordinated along with the city's ARPA money? Is Wood O'Brien going to be the consultant for the city?
We have not heard whether the city will be using a consultant. I don't know if Tom has, or Brent. Okay, it doesn't look like we've heard that, and it looks like Tom wants to speak.
I don't know. We've talked about that historically with them, recommended it to them, but I don't know if they've actually done that yet or not.
We would love to have a community-wide spending plan, and we would love to collaborate as much as possible.
Especially if there's a public focus groups effort. A little scary that, can you want to, do you want to talk to Mr. Layton about that?
Sure.
Because we have, you and we have the experience of the last go-around, and I don't, if I was, if I was sitting in their chair, I wouldn't want to reinvent the wheel.
I can do that, Chairman.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. I don't have, I think it's a great idea if we could get the city involved and the other cities here, so I hope that we continue to reach out to them and make sure that they are involved in it. Just a couple things. I have no problem whatsoever with moving the $5 million dollars remaining over and paying for that. I don't know if you want a motion. If you do, I'd be happy to make one, but, okay.
It's just a receive and file at the end unless you would like to do something different.
The other thing is that you talk about the Health Department looking forward, $7 million expense going forward. What I'm trying to figure out is, is when are we going to stop the vaccines from the Health Department? Because every time I drive by Walgreens or Dylan's, I see signs out there, everybody's giving shots. At what point do we say that the community is taking care of that instead of the county?
Tim Kaufman, Deputy County Manager. Good question, Commissioner. We continue to communicate with the health community, talking to providers in the community about when they're ready. We do see pharmacies primarily ready to continue to vaccinate. The rest of the medical community has not really responded yet. It appears that many medical offices are waiting for single-dose vials to be able to do vaccinations. Managing this vaccine is different than most other vaccines that doctors' offices have handled, and it's problematic for them. And so we hope that by the end of the year, we have planned through the end of the year, and it's kind of a phased-down approach. We'll certainly be doing less even in July than we are in June, and we plan to ramp down, but we're waiting for the medical community to catch up, and part of that is waiting on the vaccine providers to get out a single-dose vial.
But those local pharmacies should be used to giving more than one dose. I took the shingle shot, and I had to get two different doses. They scheduled them, and it was no problem whatsoever.
Certainly, yeah. The pharmacies, I think, are going to continue to do what they're doing, and they will continue to meet a certain amount, a certain need in the community. The surveys, the inventories that we've taken indicate that right now they don't have capacity to do all of the vaccine that's needed. But we are aware of the need to close this out and hopefully ultimately shift this responsibly back to the medical community.
I see you're going to close the drive-through. So I'd just like some kind of an idea, a forecast for when we're going to close down and turn it over to the local doctors' offices, pharmacies, and so forth in the future. You know, not today, but sometime in the future, let us know.
Okay.
Because that might cut back on this $7 million forecast that we got in the future, so that's going to completely change what our forecast is. The other thing is, yesterday we had a great briefing on behavioral health and what the coalition's doing. At that time, it was a staff meeting. Today is a board meeting, so that more people will be paying attention to exactly what's going on here. Our number-one project, our number-one issue that we've got in Sedgwick County, our number-one legislative agenda is behavioral health. And so I want to make sure that any of the ARPA money comes, that we apply this first to our number-one priority. So as you're trying to set up buckets and bring it to us for approval, make sure that that is our top priority as far as I'm concerned, and I'm sure that the rest of the commissioners agree with me, because everyone has agreed with that is where our priority is. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Okay, and Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. In regards to behavioral health money, of course, I wonder where we're at with the other bucket of the federal money that wasn't directly sent to us that is allocated for mental health and substance abuse. So I hope that our grant professional is kind of keeping an eye on that. Along with the COVID task force, I think that, you know, at the partnership, they're kind of working on that as well. Okay, so I just want to make sure we're doing that.
Yes, and so we actually, we have Kevin Stamper in legal. We have Aaron Norton, who's the grant analyst in finance, who are both focused on those external buckets. We also have just recently received a list from DRS, which is one of our consultants. We also have received a summary from Wood O'Brien's on those other funding buckets, along with estimated timelines of when those, you know, the federal government or a state agency may be standing up programs. Right now, I think really the only thing that has good guidance at this point, or even a starting point on good guidance, is our bucket. And that was rushed through, even with a 60-day window. I don't think we're expecting any of those applications to actually be made available until later this summer. But what we have been assured is by our WIP project manager, as those needs are coming in, whether they're internal or external, the very first place they're going to look when they're assessing eligibility is, are there other streams of funding that we can use to do this? We did hear that there is likely some capital money potentially available for substance use and mental health in a separate bucket. Maybe the direct allocation we receive isn't going to allow us to do that, but there could be other buckets out there, and we expect there to be. We just don't know the rules yet. And so we absolutely have a commitment to you that staff is focused on that. Our consultants know we are focused on that and encourage us to do that, too. So we will make sure that that happens.
Okay. So in regards to vaccines, switching gears just real quickly, I understand the need to scale back the library operation, but the Health Department will still give vaccines. So we're not completely just not going to give the COVID vaccine. We're still going to offer it. We just aren't going to be the main source for the community to receive the vaccine. Is that correct?
That's correct, and it's certainly our goal. We'll continue to do both through the, over the course of the next six months, we'll continue to do both the fixed-site location and mobile and partner clinics across the community, again, transitioning away from being the primary vaccine provider in the community. But we'll still provide vaccine.
Okay, thank you for that distinction.
Okay, I don't see the other, Lindsey. So I assume we kind of interrupted you, or you still have?
Well, actually, you segued me nicely into the final things I wanted to say, so I can be done.
Final things, okay. Thank you. And thanks for letting us interrupt and ask questions, so.
You're my bosses. I'll do whatever you want me to do.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, commissioners, unless you have other questions, I recommend you receive and file.
That was the last part of your deal?
I had two other points, but you both talked about them, so I have a very inelegant way of ending.
Okay, then I will make a motion that we receive and file.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any other questions? I don't see any. So, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Lindsey, thanks again for that presentation, and we will trudge on through this process. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item K, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting of June 10th, 2021.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Britt Rosenkutter, purchasing agent. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of June 10th, 2021 resulted in four items. Item one is two each of a one-ton regular cab, four-wheel-drive trucks with dump bed, Public Works and Fleet. The recommendation is to accept the low bid from Don Hattenford in the amount of $130,600. Item two is a 4,500 crew cab, four-wheel-drive dual rear-wheel truck with flat bed, Public Works Fleet. The recommendation is to accept the low bid from Rustiak Ford Incorporated in the amount of $75,723. Item number three is the Tropics Building Roof Repair Risk Management. The recommendation is to accept the quote from Stretcher Flex, Structure Flex LLC in the amount of $775,626. And the final item is Intellectual and Developmental Disability Programs, Sedgwick County Developmental Disability Organization. The recommendation is to accept the proposals from Rainbows United Incorporated and the Arc of Sedgwick County Incorporated for the annual amounts shown beginning July 1st, 2021, with three one-year options to renew. I would be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval of these items.
Okay, thanks for the presentation. Anybody got any questions on, Commissioner Dennis?
Well, I'll let the Chairman, Chairman take it from here, but I've got a lot of questions about trucks. Can you see if Penny will come up? I'll turn it over to the Chairman.
Penny? We have our, our truck expert on the commission have a few questions. And before that, can we just congratulate you as a, on your recent announcement that you're going to be retiring soon?
Thank you very much.
And we can't, I've only worked with you a few years, and I think a few of us have only worked with you some longer than the others, but you've been a joy and to work with. Your department has been not high on our radar screen, which is, that's a backwards congratulations that you run a great ship, so.
Thank you so much.
Good luck with, to you, your family, and everything else in retirement.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Penny, I'd always have questions about trucks, not today, though, so you're in good shape.
Oh, slide.
That was a setup.
I want to thank you very much for always answering my questions. I appreciate it. I hope that I wasn't intrusive in some of the things, but I care about the way that we spend the money, and I appreciate your support in everything we've done. I signed your paper the other day. I'm not going to say how many years you worked here, but you certainly do not look old enough to work that many years, so.
Thank you very much.
I want to wish you best in the future. We're going to miss you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Penny, I remember the day I walked into your office, and I was so impressed at how just organized everything was. And then we sat down and talked about all the things that you do, and my mind was blown that you, I mean, just all of the vehicles that you manage and the miles and just the detail that goes into what you do. It was quite impressive. So I just want to say that I'm sad to see you go, but I'm happy for your future and look forward. Hopefully, we can keep in touch.
Thank you very much. I hope so.
Thank you. Thank you again, Penny. Congratulations. So I'll make a motion to approve the recommended Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Mr. Stoltz.
Commission recommends approval of consent items L through V this morning.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on the consent items L through V? I don't see any questions. I'll make a motion to approve consent items L through V. Commissioner Dennis?
No. Next thing.
Okay.
A second.
Motion in a second. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item?
Legislative Issues.
Hold on just a minute. Need to make a, I need to, we need to do an off-agenda item at this time. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we add an off-agenda item to our agenda today for the sheriff to brief us on the potential of purchase of an aircraft.
Thank you for clarifying. So a motion for an off-agenda item regarding a sheriff and aircraft. Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Aye.
Okay. We will enter in a off-agenda item. Sheriff Easter, welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Easter with the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office. I appreciate you taking the time today for this off-agenda item. As you know, you've approved funds from Fleet, roughly about $1.5 million, for the purchase of a new aircraft. We've diligently been looking for that new aircraft since that timeframe. And just like the housing market, the aircraft market is doing really well, and prices have gone up, and we cannot find an aircraft. The two times that we have located aircrafts that would fit into closely our budget, went out to RFP, they sold already. We've been in contact with Textron more than a couple times here. The aircraft, they do not have a lot of aircraft, older aircraft, because they are selling so quickly. And then the aircraft that they do have are way out of our price range. However, we identified 13 aircraft as possible replacements through two different RFP attempts. Only one company responded with an aircraft that was grossly overpriced and offered us half the appraised value. Our appraised value of our current plane is about $500,000. The aircraft dealers we spoke with, we were told repeatedly the aircraft were selling in days, and they could not keep decent aircraft in their inventory. All the dealers we spoke with would require an initial deposit upon receiving an accepted bid for a plane. So we located a company called Ballard Aviation, which is out of Newton, Kansas, where this gentleman goes and buys the aircraft, an older aircraft, and then refurbishes it. He located a refurbished 1987 King Air 300, but is asking $1.89, or $1,890,000. He would, at that point, redo all of the navigational equipment, upgrade the engines, which would have about 1,900 hours left before any major overhaul is required, which would be approximately five years. They're willing to conduct all the maintenance on the King Air aircraft at their place in Newton, and also supply us with a aircraft to continue our operations, a lending aircraft. Our current plane is 46 years old, has several issues. So far this year, we've spent $186,000 in maintenance. Parts for the current aircraft are not available. They're all refurbished parts, which usually break fairly quickly. After the last maintenance inspection, the aircraft was already having mechanical issues on the flight back to Wichita. Training for our current aircraft is in Florida. A lot of that stuff, you know already. All of the training will take place with the Beechcraft here locally. And again, the maintenance would be here local as well. Now, with that said, last night at 4:00, one of the aircraft folks that, out of St. Petersburg, Florida, the contract fell through of one of the planes that we were interested in. And so they called us to see if we were still interested, and we said we were. This aircraft is a 1988 Beechcraft 300, just like what we're looking at refurbishing. It already has the state-of-the-art Garmin avionics package. The engines, engine hours won't need overhauled for 2,700 hours, which is five and a half to six years. The props were overhauled on three of 2020. That's needed every five years, so we're five years out from that. Gear were overhauled, and we would have about four years left before the gear would have to be overhauled. It's a one-year warranty for 500 hours, and their price is $1,600,000. And so again, I wasn't able to update the manager or Penny, because this came to me at 4:00 yesterday afternoon. Either way, we're having to ask for either $100,000 more out of contingency funds from Penny's budget, or roughly 300, let's see here, about $390,000 for the one out of Newton. In regards to our current aircraft, the company out of Indiana where we have to take it to to be maintained, they've been calling for a week, asking us when we're going to bring in that plane to sell, because they have folks that are interested in buying. The price, they believe, will be right around $500,000. When we're looking at trading this plane, the most that we could get was $250,000 out of some of these companies. And so if you vote to approve one of those two options, then when the sale of the aircraft happens, that money would go back into Penny's contingency fund and would replace the $100,000 or the $390,000 plus other monies that would go in there. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay. Sheriff? So this new, the 4:00 airplane?
Yeah.
The Beechcraft. So you're saying that that, those engines will not need work for, for five years, about?
Yes. Five and a half to six years.
And that's, so they, they're based on hours, right?
So. Based on hours. The Ballard aircraft is three to three and a half years before the engines would have to be rehauled. His maintenance charges are a little bit less than some of the other local companies, and he will give us a lender plane, per se, when it is being maintained. But from a price perspective, this is a better price. It's two years younger than the plane that we are looking at at Ballard. And when it comes to engine overhaul and those type of things, it's in better shape for less money.
So those five, and you, did you say something about like, it's like 2,800 hours or something for the five years? It's one five?
2,700 hours. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And then, so what we need to consider is a motion to allow contingency of at least 100 up to 390.
Well, if, we're very comfortable with either, either plane that you, so if you want to vote for $100,000 or $390,000. I will tell you, with the $100,000, we would need that fairly quickly, because this, they're not going to reserve this plane for us.
I hear you.
Chairman, you'd vote on two items, or you could do it simultaneously, the acquisition of the aircraft and the contingency move of the money.
Okay. All right. And there's a question from Commissioner Howell. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you, Chairman. Just curiously, so the $1.5 million that was set aside for this, did that anticipate money coming in for the sale of the current plane? Otherwise, $1.5 million plus half million would be about $2 million. So is your budget really $2 million, or is it $1.5 million anticipation of a $500,000 return?
Penny shaking her head, yes. So I know we have $1.5 million in contingency funds. We're hoping to get $500,000 on a trade-in, which would reduce that plane to 1,000 or a million. But no one will give us what the price is for the trade-in. So we're going to have to sell that outright. So yes, essentially, $2 million would be the overall budget for this.
Well, again, so I think we're actually finding a solution that's much less than we probably anticipated.
We are.
Despite the fact that prices are up, and I have no doubt the prices are up, I mean, seems like everything's up right now. But did you say that the plane in Newton, what was the year on that airplane?
1987, I believe. Let me look at this again.
The current plane's 1975?
Our current plane is 46 years old, so however old that is. But it's a 1987, is the plane out of Ballard, and a 1988 is the plane that is $100,000 more than our current budget.
And these are the same make and model?
Yes, they are.
So in, on the plane from Florida, we would still do the maintenance and training here in Wichita?
Yes, we would.
Well, I think this seems like a pretty obvious choice to me. I think that, I'll just say, I'll just say this. When I first became a Commissioner, I was interested in the fact that the county owned an airplane. I wanted to understand that more deeply as to why do we have an airplane? And you convinced me very easily that this was a very important part of your operation, that having an airplane to move prisoners around the country is a critical asset. And so no question, this is a need, and I think you've convinced me today that this is a really good option. So I don't know who wants to make a motion, but I would be very pleased to support a motion that talks about the 1.6 million dollar option out of Florida, and with the intent to hopefully sell our aircraft for the half million dollars. I think it's a, it's a good option. Those two options together make a lot of sense to me. And I'd be glad to make the motion if that's, if that is understandable, or I'd be glad to stand by and let someone else make the motion. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, we've been discussing this now for a long time, and we've been trying to buy an airplane for a long time. My worry is if the Commission today votes on one of them, and that falls through before you can get it purchased, because something could happen between 4:00 last night and right now, and then the other one you could lose. I would rather we made a motion that we will transfer up to, say, $400,000 from contingency to be able to purchase either of those planes, whichever one that you can get first. And I agree with Commissioner Howell that the one down in Florida sounds like the much better deal. But if there's any delay whatsoever, and you lose it, and you got to come back to us again, and we're going to hold a special meeting or something for you to be able to buy the other one, that doesn't make any sense to me. So what makes sense to me is that we give you the additional funds, and you go out, and our preference is to buy the newer one. But if that falls through, I don't want you to have to come back to us again, and possibly between now and then time that we could vote again while it falls through. So I don't care if, who makes the motion, but that's the direction I would go. Thank you.
Okay. That good point. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Lindsey or Penny, what is the Fleet Contingency Fund total balance?
Penny Poland. $1.5 million in budget authority.
Okay. So, but what is your 20% contingency fund that you have? Trying to establish how much money is in the bank.
So actually, this is not in the County General Fund. This is a separate fund, the Fleet Management Fund. And so it is, I'm going to get technical on you, and I'm sorry, but that's a certified fund, so this is one where we'd have to readopt the entire budget if you wanted to increase the authority, which is why it has its own separate contingency. They have more than ample fund balance to pay for this this year. But at year-end, because this is all based on either departments reimbursing for the fuel they really use, or the miles they really drive, or the set aside to build up, we have to make this fund whole for that cost. So at year-end, when we do those year-end transfers, we would come and ask for either the $100,000 or the, you know, maybe $390,000 from the General Fund to keep that fund whole. But for today, it's not an issue.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you so much.
Okay. So what's the other question? So they, to make this right, I'm in support of what Commissioner David Dennis was saying to give you the leeway to hopefully come in with the, with the better price, but.
Yeah. So we talked with the gentleman yesterday. Depending on, you know, how you voted today, that would be the first phone call we make as soon as we leave here, to tell them that we want to purchase the plane. And yesterday, I saw that, I thought it was out of St. Petersburg, Florida. It's actually hangared in Phoenix, Arizona. So that's the plane that we would call on immediately.
Okay. So to keep this right, Mike, help us make sure we get a motion that.
Yeah. As the county manager mentioned earlier, I think you'd need two different motions, one to purchase the plane and one to transfer the funds. I think Commissioner Dennis's comments will work very easily for the transfer of the funds, transfer up to a certain amount of money.
Okay.
But I think on the other motion, you may want to make a motion to buy a particular plane, and, or in the alternative, giving the sheriff authority to purchase the second plane if that deal falls through.
Okay.
Make sure that that's clear.
Let's make a, have two motions in. I'll make a motion that we transfer up to 390,000 into the contingency fund from Penny's contingency fund.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Aye.
Then we'll make another motion to authorize the sheriff to proceed to purchase the airplane as presented, either, either, either one of the planes that you addressed in the meeting, the Beechcraft 300 or the Newton Special. Okay.
Okay.
Don't put Newton Special, just any one of the two. Okay. There's a motion in a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. I really do appreciate it.
All right, Sheriff. Thank you. Sheriff, by the way, can I, can I talk to you after the meeting sometime? I'm going to just call today. Thank you. All right. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the team, there are no legislative issues to discuss today.
Okay. Does anybody have anything about legislative issues? I don't see any. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item?
Committee Reports.
Does anybody have any committee reports that they want to report? Commissioner Cruz?
No. I just want to reiterate, if anyone is watching and they missed the staff meeting yesterday,[1632.80] yesterday, we did, again, have the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition come in. Um, seven people spoke, um, about a plan, um, that we are hoping to receive community support for, so it is on Facebook, it is on YouTube, um, please go out to those channels. If you have questions or concerns, I can send you the, the link directly. It's about a two-hour presentation, uh, please go check that out. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. And that probably almost falls under the other, but we will, Madam Clerk, next item is?
Other.
Other, okay. Commissioner Howell?
Chairman, I had a, a comment on committee reports. That's okay?
Okay, yes.
I was just, uh, I had someone text me, let me know that the PBS broadcast of today's testimony was a little bit spotty, and, um, just out of respect for those that came and spoke, um, I don't know if it's, if I need to make a motion for this or not, but they did, they did provide written testimony as well. I would like to know that, uh, can we make sure that's put into the record, that the written testimony is available for anybody that would want to see that? Does that require a motion, Mr. Papoun?
I think we already received and filed.
Received and filed the verbal comments, I'm just curious about the written testimony.
How do you want, how do you...
Just, they, they provided a document. I'd like to make sure we have a, uh, I'd like to make sure that's submitted for the record, is my, is my motion, if we need to make a motion.
Madam, yeah, do you have a copy of it? You can just put it in. Okay.
And I don't even need to have a motion, so I wanna make sure we submit that for the record, so if anybody wants to take a look at that, they would have access to that testimony.
Okay.
That's all my comments. Thank you, Chairman.
And then I, uh, along those lines, I'd like to comment, I know one of the residents, one of your committee members is still here, but I was, um, informed, I was reminded that the ICT One is not, is, is not a pilot program anymore. It actually was added to the, uh, official budget as a permanent program in the twenty twenty-one, uh, budget that we, that the county approved. So, it is no longer a pilot, it is a permanent program per the, per the vote, so, okay. Any other comments? Okay, I don't see any. Uh, we do have an executive session, so, Commissioner Cruz, or Madam Clerk?
Executive session.
Okay.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for twenty minutes until eleven fifty-five, um, for consultation regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship on the subject of contract negotiations, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to a live broadcast. Are we staying in this room, or are we leaving?
That's enough, up to you and the chairman. We can go down to that.
Why don't we go down there, that way we can...
Okay, and then return to this room.
We'll return to this room.
And the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at eleven fifty-five.
Okay, I'll second that. Motion in a second, that we go into executive session as described. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
I'll stand here. I'll stand here. I'll stand here.